America, interior republic for which it stands. One nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Have a chance to look the agenda over, is there a motion to approve our agenda?
She'll move.
All right, we'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have minutes sent from January 4th. Rick was at third, do you two guys want to know more on that?
I read through them yesterday, I didn't see anything that I disagreed with, so I'll make a motion to approve them, Ms. Brennan.
More seconds.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't get you stuck in a little bit more, but...
No, I looked at that, thanks, guys.
We were nice to you.
We thought about it. We were gonna call you, now.
I did get a call last week from the lady from, I'm not sure what her name is, and I should've wrote it down, but it has to do with the assessment that has to be put on our Humboldt County Landowners, $3,000 assessment to keep it up. She wanted to get ahold of you sometime to go over the, you know, wall in her, and you hardly use this work, how they're gonna assess, and soon we'll assess it like we always have, but maybe Peggy has a number. Do you have any other county landowners you can contact?
Um, I know, we have it in our current budget, but, yeah, ours, who did?
I told her to tell Peggy, I gave her your cellphone number, so if you have strange phone calls, I'm sure it might be her calling.
I got a call from, uh, that lady over in Clarion, that Carl gave her my number.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, I called her back and left her a message.
Yeah.
She wants someone from Humboldt to be on that board, so I told her to get me the details and when they meet, whatever, so I'll let you know, Peggy, if that comes through, yeah.
For sure. All right, very good. With that, I don't see anybody in the public for public concerns this morning. Um, let's see, could you guys get a little chance to look at claims, any of them? More than just...
Claims were $263,539.69, and that's with the hand, handwriting, and the drainage district was $42,432.77.
Okay, I had $263,533.69, you said $539?
No, $263,539, what did you add?
Thirty-three.
Five thirty-three.
Uh-oh.
I just wanna make sure.
That's what I had, that's what I had, too.
Okay.
Five thirty-three, what?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Wow.
And then the forty-two, four thirty, two ten, that's what...
Yeah, I went through the claims also, so I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, other claims. Any discussion? Same, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, here. All right, Michelle, you can come on up this morning, Heather, and start.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
I just got handouts to pass around here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kids that way, and they completely...
Yeah. It's hard sometimes, you know, in the book.
Yeah.
Give it all over yourself.
We need to, yeah, thank you.
Perfect. If you do all that?
I just have them for file, I'll make it happen, give it to Carl there.
We'll have an extra one.
I was gonna say, I'll have an extra one when we're done, so...
Just send it right here.
Yep, that'll be fantastic.
Perfect. So, I'm Michelle Slayer, CEO of the hospital, I believe I know most of you, and Heather, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Heather Shaw, I'm the CFO at the hospital. So, we're just here to give you guys an update as to kinda what's going on at the hospital, as well as, there's some changes happening, obviously a lot regulatory-wise, with payers and insurances and the government that we're battling, but also with the strategic direction of a healthier county, is what we're looking for. There's a lot that goes into that with increasing staffing, to kinda build that infrastructure, to assure we have the right safety and security for our patients and the right programs. So, kinda we'll walk through that. At the end of the day, we have nothing to ask of you, but just to make you aware that if we were to ask for an increase in tax levies, you would have some background as to what's going on over there, to understand our needs, so...
That's great.
The first page is really just our strategic plan and our vision and our mission changed over the last year, and so then really what that's doing is just defining who we are and what our long-term goals are. So, as we build things, we refer back to this quite frequently to make sure we're all on the same page together. So, I won't read those individually to each of you, but that's really the strategic plan of our organization. On the second page, just going through some high-level accomplishments that occurred in calendar year 2015 for us. In regards, in regards to the growth section, we did increase our marketing presence to build that stronger image and brand of our hospital and make people aware that we can do most everything locally for them, and if not, we want people to ask that question so we can build those programs for our local residents. We also initiated a discussion around a facility master plan, so that's looking at our organization as a whole, taking our strategic plan and figuring out what does our building need to look like to implement some of these things in the future. So, it's looking at a one-to-three-year, what do we want it to be, all the way down to a ten-year plan. From finance, we were able to successfully recruit physicians to our organizations, the Dr. Ryan and Dr. Megan Wood signed and were successfully recruited, as well as Chastity Ruby, who's a nurse practitioner that would replace Jamie Bonner. We also, the bottom three, Dr. Karim, Dr. Justice, and a radiologist, also joined us from a specialty perspective to provide those care, that care local. So, Dr. Karim is a neurologist, Dr. Justice is a heart cardiologist, and the radiologist does those biopsies for breast and imaging and those types of things, so anxious, or excited to have those on, on our staff.
They get there about a day a week?
Typically once a week, some are every other week. Dr. Karim, he would probably be our first one as we look at telehealth, so he, instead of making the trip up here, doing it through, through the computer with a nurse available, especially for those follow-up visits.
Sure.
But otherwise, yeah, we try and get him here as much as we can. In regards to service, we started the discussion around a diabetic education center, so knowing Dr. Megan Wood is an endocrinologist who deals with thyroid, diabetes, pituitary, adrenal type things, there'll be a big need for that, so started learning about that program. And then promoting health and wellness to community groups, knowing a lot of businesses are asking us to help support their employees to lower the cost of healthcare premiums, we've really started to understand what might that look like as we go forward. Quality, we were able to receive grant money for a lean training of our quality nurse, so just looking at every department, seeing where we can have some cost savings that were more of a long-term savings. And then patient satisfaction, the government has moved to an HCAPS tool, which basically, if you as an organization are using the HCAPS tool to measure patient satisfaction, it gets loaded into a website that CMS organizes, which is healthcare.gov. It basically compares organizations against one another, that patients can go on, search three different organizations, determine where you want to receive care. So, we were able to switch over to that tool, and we should go live with that this coming year.
Were you on another type?
We were, it's really similar.
I figured it was, if this would be on a standardized one.
Very standardized, yep, and it's looking at your visits overall, so it's saying, before it was, is it very good, is it good, is it fair, is it poor? Now, it's always or never. So, do they always do this, and that's really what they're measuring us is on, if you answer always. So, those patients, I know people don't like to fill those out, 'cause it can be a pain and it can take some time, but it's critical to us and it's critical to how we get paid in the future as well, so, trying to keep it simple, but...
You see that in more and more industry, it's not even in the hospital field, it's in other businesses too, like machine, everybody's doing that, but everybody kinda hates to fill them out, but I think they make them as simple as you can, so they're quick to fill out, I guess, that's why you get them to fill them out, keep them simple.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Five to ten questions, that's one five.
The HCAPS questions, it's about thirty-two questions, unfortunately.
That's cute.
We stuck with just the HCAP questions, I know Fort Dodge is utilizing both survey tools, so it's up to seventy questions for a patient, which, when you only get about a thirteen percent return rate, it's hard.
See a lot of those going in the circular file.
Absolutely, they do.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll get to that later, right? In regards to people, we developed that mission statement, and then starting to reestablish how we wanna look and feel. We want that wow experience when you walk through the doors, so just really getting it down to the frontline staff and understanding some barriers, and that's what we're focusing in on. So, 2016, as we go into this next year, on the next slide, as we kinda talked about, we're developing and exploring that, those telehealth options, whether that's for urgent care, whether that's for some of the specialists that we can't get up here but maybe would be willing to see patients through the computer, definitely exploring that. Further development in the marketing area, talking about doing some patient testimonials, talking about flyers into the home, so just people understand what we do and that we can do it right here at the hospital. And then, our hopes is to get approval from our Board of Trustees in regards to the facility master plan and potentially start groundbreaking. The biggest thing right now that we know we need is, A, we are recruiting physicians and we are being very successful at that, that the building that the physicians are in today is not big enough to support what we need in Humboldt. And so, our first mission and priority is to tear down that building and attach them to our hospital. It is really hard for me to sit in my office and watch patients walk across the parking lot in this type of weather, coming over for lab and x-ray, as well as that coordination of care with the inpatients and the ER and all of that, having us in one facility. So, looking at a pretty significant building of two floors, that could house our therapies, our outpatient physicians, as well as our primary care doctors, so just kinda starting to walk through what that might look like. Also looking at, people have a hard time finding our emergency department, and so we've tried to change a few things, but unfortunately, people still get lost, and that is the most critical service we have, so we can't have people lost looking for where to go in the doors at. So, this would help also open up and have good visual of where the emergency entrance is, so, excited for that to unfold. In the finance, our new providers will all begin this year, Chastity will begin in May, and then doctors would start in about August, so we'll have up to seven providers in that clinic then. We're gonna continue to...
I'm sorry, are they just finishing their degrees, or are they, are they...
They're actually out of school, yep, they'll have five years of...
They'll have some practice, that's good.
Yeah, five years of experience prior.
Even better, that's...
Absolutely. They stayed in Florida to finish, let their kids finish school there, so that's kinda their delay, as well as, her being an endocrinologist, they're not easy to find, and so she wanted to give her patients one last chance to see her and then help facilitate, yeah, yeah. So, we also have another doc coming Thursday this week, Dr. Zuber, her and her husband are joining us for a site visit for the weekend, so if any of you are coming to the foundation event on Saturday, she will be there, but anxious to show her our community, and she would be a 2017 physician that would be available to start, so we'll know by the beginning of, end of spring, early summer, if she would join us. And then we have one more doctor that I continue to talk to that would be available in 2018, so, again, just preparing for the future and not getting stuck in a lull where we can't find anyone. And then, we're gonna analyze each service line for efficiency, and a lot of that has to do with, as a, as a cost-based reimbursed hospital, you don't necessarily look at the day-to-day of what's happening within an individual department, so it's important for us to understand, if we were not cost-based, what's the revenue, what's the expense of this specific department, to know, are we focusing in on the right things? Even though we're paid for those costs today, will that be our future? We just need to really start to understand that right now. We plan to open the diabetic center, we are testing our first patient right now, that's required in order to get certification and accreditation to be a diabetic education center, so we have one patient going through that, Abby Devers is the RN that's running that program, so anxious to get that going. Again, the corporate health and wellness program, we should have that structured, our physical therapist, Gabe, is really the one focusing in on that, and would be part of that pre-employment, work comp, all of that that goes with it. And then the community needs assessment was due this year, and so we'll just be getting that information early in the year and then starting to develop some programs around that. Typically, obesity and smoking are the two biggest things, and so, our public health gals, we have a couple that are trained in the smoking sensation, so we hope to deploy that a little bit more out to the community as well. The lean implementation, just to take that further, more education on HCAPs internally, emphasis on patient satisfaction, so discussing partnering with an outside entity to help us do that, it's a significant investment, so just making, weighing out the pros and cons of that right now. And then creating a patient and family advisory council, those that can help us as we even build this new building, start these new programs, that they would sit around the table and help us see it from a patient's perspective. And then for our people, just working on an orientation program, education and development for our staff, we are starting a healthcare heroes program, so that is where patients and their families can nominate basically, or just recognize an employee, whether it be the cleaning person, a nurse physician, the dietary staff, whoever that might be, but it would all be from patients, and then have a recognition, net recognition bank went yearly for those, for those folks. And then we hope to achieve, an achievement award this year, so looking at whatever that might be, whether it's safety, whether that's programs, whether that's people, just trying to understand if we as a hospital are, are ready for some type of award, an award that way.
You have a lot of goals in that.
We do, don't we?
Sounds good.
We are. So, then I'm gonna pass the next slide over to Heather.
So, the next slide is just looking at our fiscal year 2015 audited financials, our operating statement, and I'm not gonna go through this line by line, but just kind of an overall picture. Our revenue for fiscal year fifteen ended at just shy of fifteen million, which, as you can see, is about $1.4 million from the previous year, so we continue to get busier, we continue to, to see more growth in that fashion. Along with that comes increased expenses, and as you can see there, we had total expenses of about fifteen million, a little over fifteen million. So, we did end up as an operating loss, then you add in your county taxes and a few other non-operating revenues, and we basically broke even in fiscal year fifteen, we had a $17,000 positive bottom line, primarily due to a change in regulations that we had to account for, so, that's just kind of a brief overlook as to what our fiscal year fifteen financials look like. On the next three slides, it's just giving a comparison of our county tax asking compared to other hospitals and other entities, and it's very, very small, I do not expect you to be able to actually read this necessarily, but the, as you can see from the first slide, this is based off of our total dollars levied, we've asked $300,000 for the last number of years, and as you can see, that puts us absolutely last by a good $100,000 of total dollars levied. The next slide, same chart, just looking at the property tax only portion of it, again, we are coming in dead last, again, by a good $100,000 difference between us and the next hospital in their county tax asking. And the final slide of this portion of it is the, looking at the total tax rate, and as you can see, we are not dead last on that one, we are about sixth from the bottom, and, but you can see, you know, base, tax rate versus dollars, it certainly does kinda show a picture of, you know, just our county and so forth, so...
I think what's important to know is our Board of Trustees is actually very proud that they are at the bottom, and that's where they want to be. They want us as a hospital to be able to operate and run on our own and not be asking community for, as you can see, millions of dollars that some do. So, their strategy going forward is not to come up with a lot of money, but they, we do know that as we looked at our strategic plan, our new building, all of that, there is gonna be some financial changes, and so just kinda making that aware, but the board is very cognizant of what it looks like today.
And the only thing I would have concern for, Michelle, is usually, being the lowest one, I mean, that's a great thing that you're able to do that, but I would always be concerned the next two or three up, how far apart are you getting from them? If you're the lowest, you could still be the lowest, and maybe a slight increase, and sometimes, in my opinion, that would be easier than trying to come and say, I need fifty percent.
Right.
But I'm looking at the lowest from the first page probably, that's only, three hundred thousand, the next one's up at four to ten.
Four to ten, yeah.
And, you know, there's quite a few of them in that, for, you know, that four to ten to eight, I mean, even if you were in that range, it would be very, a good mark, but, you know, you wouldn't wanna get too far away from, you know, the bottom.
Right, right, absolutely.
I don't know.
I got a question for you.
Absolutely.
Back to your audit page.
Yep.
I notice your interest expense has gone down, so that we're paying down debt, pretty good.
We are, yes, we had a couple of loans for the Springdale buildings, that assisted living and independent living, and we've been paying those down, so, so yes, our interest expense is going down.
How many years left is there?
Oh, with one of them, we end this year, June 16, and the other one, we have about five or six years left on it, I believe, so, we're getting pretty close to...
The end of that.
To the end of that phase, and we'll jump into the facility master plan phase, so...
And those buildings today are ten to fifteen, one's ten years old, the other one's about fifteen.
Doesn't seem like it.
Right? Which also means they need some updating.
I heard the bottom, did you change no cam for last year, forty, forty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Can you just give me a brief rundown of that one?
Absolutely, absolutely, so what that was in fiscal year fourteen, is we have to, since we're a critical access hospital, we are paid based off of cost. So, at the end of the year, when we're all, all is said and done, we have to do what's called a cost report, and we turn that into Medicare. This $430,000 was taken into account, not only do we have the cost report in our normal operations, but since we are affiliated with Trinity, with Unity Point, there's what's called a home office cost allowance, and it's under scrutiny right now by Medicare.
Okay.
So, this is allowing, or building back in the allowance for them to take back money for that home office cost.
As part of the cost of day after.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, yeah, that was a kind of a lump sum build-in, and I can tell you that in fifteen, we did pay that back, Medicare came in and finally got everything together and said, we want our money back. So, we did pay back, not quite the full $430,000, both Medicare and Medicaid can come back and, and take back money on this.
But that got you in alignment, so you didn't have to charge.
Exactly, exactly, so it, it put it in and added that allowance to it. Yep, absolutely, no problem.
I think with that point being made, and you can follow up on this, but, as a, another part of that, as a critical access hospital, we do get paid differently by Medicare based on our costs, so when we have swing years where it's bad, and then the next year's really good, it's really hard on CFO to manage that. So, we received a check last June for the fiscal year previous, which would've been in, for fourteen...
Thirteen.
For thirteen, where they paid us a little over $500,000, because our revenue was really bad in thirteen. We just paid a check of...
Just shy of $800,000 to Medicare.
Back to them.
Back to them.
For the year.
There's a constant up and down.
The government.
Yes, you know, the...
County Social Service.
Yeah, the, the best is when you have revenue years that stay pretty, you know, there may be a little bit, but in fourteen to fourteen to fifteen, were significant swing years, so, we saw the significant receives and payables to them, so... Any other questions about that stuff? And then last, we just wanna walk through the emergency services, you know, a lot of counties actually run this through the city or the county, we obviously wanna keep it within our hospital, it makes the most sense for us, but it's important for you guys to know where we're at. Our ambulance has been significantly busier than it has in the past, just hit record numbers at the end of calendar year fifteen, which was over eight hundred runs, so as you can see, there was eight hundred and twenty-four runs, that call volume, in 2015, so that trend is continuing to go up. We have three rigs, and there have been multiple times when those, all three were out, and so it's important that we maintain and manage the maintenance of all three of those vehicles and keep a crew large enough to manage if three calls were to go out at the same time. You can see the mileage of our ambulance rigs as well, and that's just on, based on where these patients get transferred out of, if they don't, don't stay here, as well as the local county coverage. And then, keeping in perspective, the county call volume, so our Humboldt ambulance obviously takes care of the entire county as needed, but we do have small towns that continue to maintain their own services. The number behind each of these little communities is how many EMS workers they have, so in Renwick, there's four of them, those numbers continue to decline, which, when they're not available, that means our rigs are going for their distances, so that's a lot of what the volume has been, but that was in 2015, you can see there was, you know, about a hundred calls, that if those services were to go away and consolidate, our rigs are gonna take that much more on and travel that much further from, from home base, so, just keeping that in mind as we go forward.
Well, with those, then we get three people, and it takes two to run it, so one of them's gotta be on call almost all the time, and the other two towns are any better, they've got four, so...
It is scary, and it's...
It is, it's a lot for those small towns to keep and maintain, and those, you know, three or four people are, it's a constant. It's a big commitment for those communities and those people that are doing it, so kudos to them to stay on call.
Well, you know, like Gil and Renwick are both on the other edges of the county, so it does help you guys, I mean, it's critical sometimes, a few minutes makes a big difference.
It does make a big difference, and, yeah, that's the most important piece of it right there, is quick access to help when you need it. And then, I'll kinda let Heather walk through the expenses.
So, on the expenses, I just kinda took not only operations to run the EMS service, just normal operations of supplies and personnel and so forth, but also any capital items, any large purchases that we had to make, so as you can see, it kinda went up and down. In fourteen, we purchased an ambulance, along with a hydraulic cot for the ambulance, the light pack or defibrillator, and then the Lucas device, and we'll get into the Lucas device just a little bit more in a moment. Fiscal year fifteen was pretty much just operations, no major purchases. Fiscal year sixteen, we did have to, this is through November 30, is where these numbers come from, and we did have to replace the chassis on one of our rigs that decided to die on us, so, yeah, so we did have to replace that, and then fiscal year sixteen annualized, I annualized the operating costs that we've had thus far in sixteen, and then added in that chassis, so hopefully there will be no more large expenditures for the year, but as you can see, we're still sitting, you know, costs continue to go up, and the bigger we are, the more that we have there.
That's what's gonna happen with pretty small communities, if they get to a point they can't replace that ambulance.
Exactly, it's not a cheap process.
Lots of them, Renwick's a used one, you know, several years old, I know it was in good shape, but it's getting harder and harder to make that money even with fundraisers and stuff.
Absolutely, you know, you're looking at an easy hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars at least.
Small town, they just don't have it.
Exactly.
Even if they're budgeting ten thousand a year, that's, when something comes up and has to pull for that, you know, it's, it takes ten, fifteen years to get a hundred thousand.
Absolutely, so, yeah, it's certainly a financial commitment, not only personnel commitment, but a financial commitment as well. And then just some of the unique things with our EMS service, we have the Lucas device, which is a chest compression machine, you can see a picture of it here. When we purchased this, we were the next closest place that had them was Ames, so, and even today, we're one of the few smaller EMS services that has a Lucas device, and what it does is it takes out the manual piece of the chest compression, you have to keep it at a certain rate, and it, it takes out that, that human factor of getting tired or, it's consistent, it's a machine, it's very consistent.
And it does it to the right depth, every once, every time, guaranteed a hundred percent.
Right, depth, right rate, everything, so it's...
And I think what's key here is if you think about having to do this manual, which we've done it for years and years and years, but if you find a patient upstairs and you have to get him down, you have to stop chest compressions to get him down the stairs into the ambulance, or if they're in a ditch, you can't do it until you get them up to a stable area of this, you wrap around and it's stopped, it, it doesn't stop for you to make a mobile, so it's going.
It's a hand drill.
It really, truly is, and it makes a huge difference, it's already saved a couple of lives just because of that Lucas.
What's something like that cost?
It was about fourteen and a half thousand dollars, it was about fourteen-five.
Does that matter to operating them?
Um, I believe so, yeah, I believe so.
Are more communities getting those now?
There's, you know, it's not, it moved as quickly as one would think, and Fort Dodge doesn't have one yet, and every time we bring a patient through their doors using it, they're just like, why don't we have one of these?
Everybody comes and watches.
Checks it out.
Keep your eye on your own.
Right.
Even the cardiologists have commented to the group.
You've used it quite a bit.
We have used it.
We have.
Looks like anything else, once you have it, you're gonna use it.
Absolutely, it's been huge, we're very proud of it, now you're proud of it.
Up at our church, we've been looking at some defibrillators, because you never know, so we leaned on Mike, sexy, and he gave us a...
Well, up at our church, we've been looking at some defibrillators, because you never know. So we leaned on Mike, sexy, and he gave us a couple of packs that recommend using this type, and we appreciate being able to call while we've got Rick Stein, we have Jim Grumbach, several of the firemen, so, you know, you never know when someone's going to have a heart attack in church, and we don't, not that we'd ever want to use it, but we're trying to raise the funds, but using the pack that they have offered to help us with.
That's great.
So hopefully, other, you know, they have one of, they have them at school.
They do.
So hopefully we'll all get our funding put together and get one of those purchased too for our church.
And I know Mike's had quite a few more calls after the Spencer child died, to get them, A, people more educated on them and be located more likely.
Well, that's, that's what we appreciate, was Mike being willing to give us, this is what we have used and we like, and so it was good for us, so.
I could give you some tips on doing that.
Yeah, that was the other thing. Hopefully we'll be able to, once we get a purchase, so we appreciate that, their help.
And Mike's, we're going to start doing even just more hos, or, uh, community-wide CPR training and classes. So whether we come to a business and do it for a group, or we have sessions at our hospital, I know Mike's starting to line that kind of stuff up right now as well, so.
That'd be good.
Mm-hmm, just the basic CPR.
Well, I have one question on, on your wellness program.
Yeah.
When I was, we were with the ISAC meeting in Cedar Rapids there, was talking, Rick Rasmussen had made a comment that Humboldt County, or that Wright County was, had a wellness program for their county. Are you guys talking about putting something together for different businesses, if, I mean, that you administer, I mean, you, I mean, how, what's the plan on that?
But we're thinking more, more local businesses, not necessarily community-wide yet, but, you know, a package deal that we could set up to have, you know, our dietitian, the chef, our physical therapist, you know...
Just changing the mindset.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, people are more cognizant of it, and whether it's through the fit bits that everybody's starting to wear, and tracking that, and having competitions and all that to get, get people moving help, so.
Well, he said it's helped their, with their rates.
Sure, sure. I know it does.
And I think that, you know, that'd be something that, we're always looking to try to figure out a way to cut a cost.
Yeah.
If we can get something like that put together, and I think it'd be huge for us.
And Dr. Ryan Wood is a family medicine and board certified in sports medicine, so he wants a lot to do with the athletes of our community, but he continues to talk about being part of those programs, going out to the businesses as the physician to kind of lead some of that program as well. So we're anxious to have him, he's planning to work three longer days, so the clinic will be open extended hours when he shows up, and have that after-hours access, as well as one of the nurse practitioners, and then that'll free him up a couple extra days a week to be able to support the school, the businesses, and that type of thing as well, so.
I think that would be huge. I think that could help a lot.
So right now, our kickoff is getting things lined up within our own organization, so we're, Gabe, one of our physical therapists, has gone through some training in regards to that pre-employment stuff, so really starting there, and then the next step of it will be to build the wellness programs. We've got a couple of businesses that have already asked, and so we're just kind of testing the water right now with what that might look like from a dietitian's perspective, healthy eating, weight loss management, all of that, so, yeah.
All those hands and hands.
It does, it does, and it's becoming a big deal, as you said, for a lot of reasons, including cost. The last thing down here was mobile mapping. There's more commu, we were one of the first two to have mobile mapping, but the police, the EMS, the firemen, all have this within their rigs. It basically maps out for the providers where they're going, and even can map out internal buildings, so schools, you know, where you're supposed to go located, where the fire hydrants are for the firemen, for our EMS, what side to park the car, you know, the rig on. It, it just can get into specifics if you need it, but it helps them get to where they're supposed to go faster by giving them directions and not helping, or not, they're not lost out in the middle of no man's land, yeah. So it's very community, or county-focused for us. And then, this year, and it just happened at the end of 2015, but we now have EMTs staffed in our ER in the evenings and throughout the night. So just to put that in perspective, previous to that, we had one nurse in the ER all night long, about 6:00 PM, there was one nurse, until about 7:00 AM. So for the most part, we're not that busy in the ER, so they can handle the one patient, but you have a significant trauma, a car accident, you have more than one patient showing up, you have one nurse that has to manage all of that, and it was just not safe for our patients and, and for our nurses. So we made the commitment to increase and have an EMT there to support the patients, the nurses, and, and just be an extra set of hands for both the ER and the inpatient unit as well. And we've already, that's already paid off from a patient's perspective, with just a few weekends, days that we've done that, so. Very thankful to be able to provide that to our community. So that's awesome in a nutshell.
So you're not nothing then?
Nope. But we're looking for work.
There you go.
It's exciting, it's what we love, and happy to be part of this community, so.
Well, it's nice to see your vision is focusing on changing the future and getting aligned with what's coming. I think that's probably what everybody's going to have to do, but the sooner you get to it, the better it is.
That's right.
I think your vision, your aggression, move forward in the future.
And that's where, you know, the, we are living in two worlds right now with health insurance and costs and the government and all of that, however you want to look at it. So they're looking at value-based, what are your quality, what are your quality scores, what do your outcomes look like, what is your patient telling you that you are, and we're going to pay you on that, versus today, we're paid on a fee-for-service world. So managing that, it costs a lot of money to build the infrastructure to get to where the government would like us to go. And we know healthcare's not sustainable the way it's paid today, so we've got to do something, it's just, what is that something? And we're just starting taking it step by step, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you for your time. We left one there.
Yep.
Here's another one. You can throw it away.
Throw it away, should put her in the pile. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Have a great day.
Hey Bruce, you see Paul out there?
He walked by, I think he went in there.
Yeah, he would.
I see we can do that. We have that first appointment pending, want to go over that with the Midas Transit?
Yeah, I had a email from Melissa Reinhardt, and she said we need to appoint Travis, and then I talked to Gloria too, not only to the Midas Transit Board, but the Midas Executive Board, and the Mid-Iowa Girls Partnership Board. Travis is the new city administrator. We started today, I believe.
Yeah.
So we're already getting him involved.
There you go.
Doing some jobs.
Do I have the motion to appoint him?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Who's Carrie?
Paul.
Come on up.
I wish I could trash the, they can't, any team I ever cheer for, look out. Good morning anyway. We only have one order of business this morning, approve full-time labor hiring for Humboldt County Secondary Roads per union contract, and the union contract is apprentice starting at $20.23 an hour for Craig Wiggins, W.I.G.A.N.S. He lives over south of Hardy, Iowa. He'll be starting in the Hardy Shop two weeks from today, plus or minus. So it looks like the 25th of January, and it could be the 26th. There's a few bugs in there to work out yet, but, uh, we interviewed and, and we offered, and he's accepted, so.
Good.
Okay.
Craig's a good guy. Your motion?
Uh, okay. I'll make a motion for the hire of Craig Wiggins at 20, 23 at the Hardy Shop.
That's right. You have a second?
Second.
Bruce?
Can I clarify that a little bit? And what's confusing here is I put per union contract, because when, we're locking him in per union contract, which happens to be 20 and 20, $20.23 for the apprentice, uh, he, he will automatically increase in apprentice rate as of July 1st to, to what, $20.81, and then shortly, in the next pay period or so, then he'll go to 21.73 for the union contract. I mean, he'll move per the union contract, so he's not locked into this, is what I'm trying to say. I'm not going to bring you back up here six...
Every time there's a brace.
That's correct. That's why I said per union contract.
So is that, in the, is there like a 90-day?
It's a six-month.
Six months.
The apprentice is six months, and it kicks us on past the, the new contract, which would be July 1st to 16, and that's why it gets, he's on this rate for five months of his six months, or, or something like that, and it'll be a month on another.
I didn't know how that was.
Yeah, he'll have three different rates in short term, so.
All right. He knows about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Very good. All right.
So that brings us up to speed, would that be...
We have all the, full-time staff would be filled with his hiring. We had one retirement, and, and this is opening for the one full-time. We did fill a couple part-times, so they've been working in, in and out, running shifts in the interim, and one of the part-times will be called anytime we need a motor patrol operator, he's, he's on that route. And he took that on the basis, if he couldn't make it, we had at least somebody else that could do it. So we, we have two for the one if we need to.
All right. Any other questions? Paul? See none? All those in favor?
All right.
Any other good news this morning? We did, uh, we did have some, we did have people out again on Saturday, and then a little bit yesterday morning because of snow and blowing snow. As I pointed to you, we have not had much winter, although we've had a 12 and a 6, and wind already, so, and we've had...
Just melts in between, like Denver.
Yeah, well, that'd be good. We have, at one of these points, we're probably already going to be thinking about reloading with sand, because we really hit the sand hard this year already, even though it doesn't appear to be, but you drive by and look in the bunkers, and you can see way back into those that were once clear outside the door, so. Doesn't seem like we've had much, we haven't had a lot of cold, yesterday morning was a frigid reminder of that, but...
Carter will be gone until Friday, but I'd like to see maybe get a work session next week, and I'd like to go over that budget with you, especially for Bruce, and I'd allow at least two hours, I think, just to...
Well, and I welcome.
And I talked to Paul, when would be the best time for you, if, would an afternoon meeting be better?
Probably.
That's what I thought, I discussed that, when we could do it, like, what, what time of the afternoon would be good?
Would you just...
No, you tell them.
I mean, any time after lunch.
So like if, um, you're done, like at 2:30 in the afternoon, you're working?
Yeah.
Yeah?
No, and I, and I encourage Bruce, I would like to take him through a couple of the PowerPoints, or one of the PowerPoints that you guys have been through repeatedly, you could probably give it, would be versions of what we gave here locally for, for budgets over the last few years, and what we presented to the legislature, Harland and myself, so that's pretty much the full boat, and then I welcome him in. Instead of presenting it to all of you guys, or I'll let you present it.
Yeah, there we go.
Sure. But we'll add similar, we need to set priorities, figure out what our standard of care is, set priorities, and then once we set priorities, then we try to do the shell game and figure out where the money's going to be spent, and that's what the work sessions should be involved with us next week.
That's great. And just let us know, we'll be out there, and you have all your materials ready to go.
No, I will be, my week is open, so it'll be whatever works best for you guys.
And that'll be, I gotta look that panel up. One second, this is the lounge, so that'll be the, next week will be best for me, because then we get into, we'll have our CSS meeting here on Wednesday of next week, on the 27th, and you'll have a meeting, probably, you have a late meeting in CFR, is that the 28th this week or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So yeah, anytime next week's probably going to be good, if you find...
Well, we'll be ready with something or another, and as to if we go this direction, here's where we could go, or whatever.
Check with us on Monday.
We'll, we'll try to set something next Monday.
Okay, that'd be good. All right, thanks Paul.
Yep.
All right, let's get back down, we need to accept a place on file of treasures in our new report, file 3115. Is there a pending on the top share?
Um, no, we just cleared it. Can I mention anything?
All right.
Different dollars.
Good.
In fact, we have cash to run the town, so we need two mentions in the minus.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve it as planned.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
In the next one is our auditors' quarterly report, the same period.
Um, we have a lot of passports this last quarter.
A lot of people leaving.
$175 in passports, yeah. Um, we've been talking in the office, possibly if we can find a place to set a permanent camera, we haven't had a camera for pictures before, and I talked to recorder's office when they did, they did two pictures either, but we're sending a lot of people other places, you know, they'll come here and they forgot to get their picture.
So then they got to show up with a, go get your picture taken, bring it back.
Yeah, yeah, and it hates having to do that to them, to make them go back and forth. So we're talking about if we can find a permanent place for a camera, we'll try to put one in. Other than that, we had postage from some drainage warrants that were cashed in, a little bit of interest off of those drainage warrants, we sell a lot of plat books, for a total of $1,160.42.
All right. Your motion is accepted.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditors' quarterly report. Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
And next is the reporters'.
Diane didn't mention anything in particular, she said if you have any questions, can't give her a call, but this is basically what she submitted before, um...
Sure.
For the report.
And you have a motion to replace and file the quarters', the quarters'.
I'll submit.
Bruce, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
All right.
Can we send one here?
Yeah, I've got...
You've got the copy for that. Very good, thank you. All right, we've done the claim, so let's go down to committee reports.
I have no reports tonight, it was gone. Uh, you didn't have LAC left?
I was gone.
Oh, you were going for that, oh, okay. Um, yeah, I guess, did they tour the building last time afterward? I think they did, but I didn't go, I don't think I went on that one.
No, it's just Dan and I went through.
Yeah, yeah.
Still looks like they have an awful lot of stuff to do, and they're saying by the end of the month, and we're just on, here we go again, it's going to be in the February.
Yeah, I see the sheriff announced it on radio that it was going to be open, didn't he?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, but I don't know.
They got a lot to do before they get there.
Yeah.
Hopefully they get it.
And also on the fourth, they had a de-cap.
Okay. We're at...
Oh, wait a minute, let me see, was that what? That might have been on a different date. On the fourth, we went over to Livermore, met with the city council on the Alyssa.
With Dean?
Yeah, yeah. And they had some questions, but I think when it comes right down to it, it'll probably go through. They were going to discuss it after we left, so. You got anything else?
I think their biggest question was is why they didn't get invited. And Dean said, we've been talking about this for months.
Six months at least, yeah.
And, you know, when they, when we threw the $10, it was, well, you know, they were a little unsure as to where we come up with that. Well, other counties are, you know, we tried to keep it as minimal as we could.
That's probably as low as any county is.
Yeah. And, you know, they understood.
I'm sure he explained their options if they didn't want to do this.
Well, what was their question? They asked, what percentage of the taxes that they pay?
Oh, yeah, how much taxes the city pays already.
And what percentage of that goes towards law enforcement? And I said, well, you'd have to probably call Peggy. We don't have all those numbers and.
No.
Yeah, the city doesn't pay any taxes, but its residents do.
Yeah, residents, yeah, it's all collected, yeah.
We did receive one other contract back from the city of Hardy.
But it's a city that's going to collect these taxes and pay them. That's what's.
Yeah, the city will have to start tracking their citizens for it.
Well, like we tried to explain to them, every time we had to put another deputy on, it costs us in his wages. It costs us in a vehicle. It costs the perks for the health and, you know, and we continue to hope we're growing in the community as far as jobs and whatnot. So that means more people are going to spread out to these smaller towns. So hopefully it's a win-win for all of us, so.
Well, Bruce, I think you're getting a, you know, you're not going to have day-to-day service with a person living in your town. But you're going to get a good basic service for, you know, $25,000 this might raise, you know, it's only going to raise a certain amount of money. So there's always going to be a person available to them. It would be really hard to replace that locally. And that's kind of what we talked about in Hardy a little bit, you know, they, they said, well, you know, we don't have somebody here. Somebody run stops. I'm, well, no, you don't. But, you know, that at times, Dean said, you could do a little step, stakeout, you know, and check, you know, see what goes on, what time of day is. If you told them what time of day you're having problems. I mean, you got to kind of work with them because they're not going to be available to you in your town 24/7, but.
But they have a vital factor that.
I think he's willing to come over and try.
I don't know. One of his questions that they asked, and Dean said afterwards that they had, what, 100 calls? Other than, but then the mayor says, well, that's only one every three days.
But then Dean also told them, or those are just a fraction of the calls that are in the paper. So.
Yeah, they were getting theirs on the paper like I was. And I thought that's what it was, you know.
No, they just put the fun ones in the paper.
More than the pain ones.
But anyway, on the fifth, I had de-cap and what to say. And that Friday evening, after school program, we terminated with the Coleman. And the state, uh, it was the Department of Human Services, says the state will not allow any fitness was, if you're in a lawsuit.
Oh, is that Coleman?
Yeah, so, yeah. So they terminated that contract and sent out, I think four, they got four applications back for the same thing. But I think it, the way it sounded, it was going to be awarded to, what was the name of that? There's another, another outfit that did that same work. I know they're real good. They get better follow-up information on what they find out and everything back. We didn't get that with Coleman. I don't know. But I guess that was, that was about all I had.
I had just the fourth up at Livermore. Last Monday after the meeting, I stopped down and talked to Alyssa for a minute down there on daycare. Gave her a couple of names for, for people down in the Dwyane area that are running a couple of daycares down there so that they have humble ties. So hopefully she could get ahold of them and see if they could pick their brain and get some information from it, so.
That's good information.
They were already aware of them, so, but she was happy that we were all on the same page anyway. So that's all I had.
All right. On January 7th, at 2:00, 3:00, I was on a conference call with Nise Ballard in our insurance group of county. And they had a committee this last year that reviewed and revised 2080 agreements with everybody in the Iowa laws. And some I thought after the time went into that, so we actually threw a little change here and got that up to speed. And then after the last couple of new people that either had left in retirement or there's one city that is, somebody had moved. Some of them have dropped out of our group. I'm not sure which. So we took care of that and talked about our next, our annual meeting for our renewal for our rate. And it's going to probably be the 11th and 12th of February. Sound like the 18th and 19th. It was like wrestling was already starting. I kind of wanted to make sure we waited until after the Iowa caucus because room rates are pretty high priced around that time. So they were going to maybe look in Iowa or somewhere out there for the 11th and the 12th, Peggy, so. We'll hear something back when they're seeing us. And then I took over, I let them know that I'd be replacing Carl for this year, giving you information for that, so. And then that night, I did, Dean called me, and he was going up to Hardy. And I had another meeting that got canceled. So I started going, driving to town one evening. So it was kind of like what Bruce said, and we, Mark, we went over this kind of, particularly the contract agreement and why we were enacting this. And, you know, the main thing is to have an agreement, which, you know, any joint venture anywhere, we've got to have a 2080 agreement signed with, you know, everything that needs to be included, so. They had a few questions and asked for some maybe a little more help when there's something with stop sign violations and different things going on. And Dean had to talk to them about how he could approach that. When it was all done, they went ahead and voted that night. So we should be getting that shortly for signature on Hardy, so. And Redwick will be February 8th, which is also the night of the Farm Bureau meeting, I believe. So I'll see how that goes. Maybe one or two of us should go over that if.
Vote, it's going to be the 1st of February.
Okay. That's coming up too. Caucus night, huh? Is that caucus night? So anyway, we're getting through those. It's a good start. I mean, it's nice to see that we're making contact with them. And I think as they get the information, talk back and forth with Dean and stuff, they're feeling comfortable with it, so. That's all I had too. All right. Peggy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I told you a while back that I picked up paperwork for the community foundation grant to fill out. Started filling it out and realized that we're not far enough in our process for the courthouse security committee to apply for funding yet because we don't have a budget set up yet. We don't know what projects we want to do first. We haven't prioritized. I don't have any estimates on anything. So this is probably a good learning thing for next year. And, you know, we stepped out of the paperwork. I know what kind of things they want. I did talk to Linda Frieders, and she suggested to, yeah, to weigh with a good idea. And she'd be willing to help me put it together next year because there's some things on here that I just don't know how to word. I'm not a grant writer. And she looked at what I put down and said, I think I'd reword that, you know, to something else. So I think I'll have her help me with it when I do it next time. But it's nice to know that that money is out there. I did call Alyssa and tell her that I wasn't turning anything in, so she wasn't looking for it because they have a list of everybody that had come to the meeting. So I don't think we'll be in a position to spend money until probably even into next fiscal year, so.
Very good.
Other than that, I did receive from Tom Wiggins a resignation. I think I put a copy in the, from the North Central Iowa EMS Association. So we'll need to appoint somebody to that position. I put it on next week's agenda. I have no suggestions for you. I don't know who they report to or anything. I could maybe get ahold of Mr. Wiggins and ask him about that one. Also, last week, on the eminent domain board, we do have to have seven people for each category. So we're short one owner-operator of agricultural property and one owner of city or town property. So we'll need to have those two appointments as well as Mr. Wiggins. I put him on next week's agenda if you guys can think of anyone.
And they must be residents, right?
One is the owner-operator of agricultural, yep, and the other owner of city or town.
Last week isn't a resident, I don't believe, so.
The only thing I could think of on owner-operator agricultural, Brett Keenest isn't a lot for, to work with Brett Andreage and that young guy. I don't know if he's interested or not at all, but I thought he, at least he's interested in what's going on in the county and getting involved. So whether he's saying this or not, I don't know. So if one of you might want to contact him, or if you know somebody else, and then somebody in town. And then I gave you a copy also of the valuation, the evaluation sheet. It should be up with those. When the assessor was down earlier in the year, she was afraid that we were going to drop real estate quite a bit because values have gone down. And, you know, we're in that process again where every so many years it drops dramatically. And it really shocks our system because then you have to adjust, you know, your budget so much. Luckily, there was an increase in railroad revenues coming through, or values. So we actually increased this year instead of dropped. So that was, that was a plus. So I did write the sign each one of them in case you want to check your local community, you know, like vote or something to see if it went up or down. Some went up, some went down just based on if they had railroad within their community or not. And so I was glad to see that it did go up about $5 million from what it did last year. So that'll help with our taxing authority.
What happened to Agland generally?
Agland, it went up too. Not quite as much as what, it went up about $5 million.
Percentage-wise, you don't?
No, I guess I didn't figure percentage.
No, I just wondered, because we were so far behind for so many years and were only allowed to increase three.
Very slowly.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we even caught up.
It can fall like a rock. It can only go a little bit at a time.
And I know the assessors association had been asking, I don't know if they still are, for a cap on the drop. There's a cap on how much they can go up, but there's not a cap on how much they can drop. And we're still kind of recovering from, you know, 12 years ago when we dropped so low that we were cutting everything we could possibly think of to make our budget work, so. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Peggy. Anybody else?
Budget papers went out. I was going to tell you that. We've got three or four departments back in already. So after we start doing that, we'll start setting meetings up.
Yeah, mine are back in already.
Yeah, Paul's was on the first.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?